Good evening. I'd like to call to order the study session for the City Council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for Monday, June 16th, 2025. We will begin our meeting as we do most of our meetings with public comment. This is to comment on any item that is on the agenda. So we have three study items on our agenda. The first study item is on Lutheran Legacy Campus, the master developer introduction. Item number two is the municipal facility feasibility and planning draft report. And item number two, or three, excuse me, is the property acquisition for Public Works and the parks shops. So I have two people that have signed up to speak here. When I call your name, if you'd please come to the podium, please introduce yourself. Give us your first name and your last name. If you'd please spell your last name so we try to get it right in the record. Tell us whether you're speaking on item number one, two, or three, and then you'll have three minutes to address the council. So our first speaker is Julia Reese, and Walt Cordyzel is on deck. It's Julia Reese here. I don't see her coming up, so let's move past Julia to Walt. Walt, I'm gonna let you handle your last name. I'm not quite sure where we are on that, so.
Yeah, I'm Walt Cordyel. Spelled like cordial invitation easier than it looks. I live on Dudley Street adjacent to the hospital, and we lived there for over 30-plus years, and I followed the entire process since the announcement in 2018 that the hospital would be moving. I'm not here to be a chronic whiner or complainer, but it definitely is gonna affect me directly where I live, right in my front yard. Like I said, the evenings won't be as quiet. Wildlife corridor is gonna change between the cirque de la Belle and Crown Hill Park, and I know what additional traffic and new neighbors might bring also. Over this entire time, I presented my elected Wheat Ridge District Three city council members have been the same, our merits have been the same within this whole time period. Major responsibility of elected city council reps is interact with residents within their district, get back-and-forth liaison between city management and residents about decisions or projects within the district or the city which might affect the residents positively or negatively, always keeping in mind that they represent residents in this process. On the one city input meeting on Dudley Street in mid-2023, the residents that are adjacent to the property were invited, which ended up being a very adversarial type of meeting. Both the residents that are adjacent were not in favor of this development, and there were no, none of our reps were present at that time. In this entire process, my observations, I've never seen any of the elected reps from the city or the city council ever push back against the mandates from the city management. It appears to me that all these directives and everything, city council is being directed by the cities not pushing backwards with the representation of their residents within their districts. All the input sessions that the city ran was on the Lutheran Legacy Campus. We're all biased to what type of zoning that should be there. No options with parks or recreation options, nothing keeping open space, nothing with the campus, medical campus retaining its medical use, and none of this was ever done, and mine is all high-density housing, which I felt that, once again, no input from a lot of the residents, especially adjacent to the hospital. All current city projects promote high-density, higher densities, with all these properties that are currently being developed in the city, more higher traffic, crowded parks, rec centers, this quest for tax revenues for the city, padding resumes all seen desired by the city and the council rather than quality rights for the city residents. It continues to degrade, and that's what I expect in the future if all these developments continue. During the entire process, the master plan, like I said, not one single vote by this council member over six years.
Mr. Cordell, your red light has gone on, so your time has expired. If you'd please wrap up.
Okay. I did come to work. The one city council member works for Intermountain, and that city council member voted positively in this whole process without abstaining, which assumes that the accomplices of interest, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Now, we had one speaker that wasn't here when I called earlier, Julia Reese. Are you here?
Yes.
Okay, if you'd please come to the podium. Introduce yourself, first name, last name. Please spell your last name, and you'll have three minutes to address the council. When the timing lights go on, there'll be about a minute and a half in the green light and then 15 seconds on the orange light, and when the red light goes on, your time is completed. And tell us which agenda item you're speaking on, please.
Speaking on the what's up with the proposed zoning of the old Lutheran property. My name is Julia Reese. I'm a Wheat Ridge resident. Quote, "Applicants shall provide justification as to how they will comply with the intent of the master plan and the city council resolution to preserve, rehabilitate, or restore the existing assets. There is no requirement for historic preservation or designation, and it has not been signed. If there is no historic designation in advance, there is no guarantee that it will happen. You have to be ready for the worst-case scenario. It is unclear if they're even required to keep a shell of the buildings. What if they determine and provide justification that it would be too expensive or too impractical to keep the buildings? What if there's accidental damage to the structure? What is the consequence if they knock down one of the buildings? Hoping the developer will do the right thing is just unrealistic. This development is designed to create a crowded urban environment on most of the property. According to the developer, more than 2,000 homes can be built there. A change of this magnitude should be voted on by the people of Wheat Ridge. In the past, we voted on the rezoning of small properties. We should vote on the rezoning of 100 acres. Maximal building coverage, no limit on how much of a parcel can be taken up by a building in contrast. Standard high-density R3 allows only 40% coverage. No setbacks. Buildings must be placed close to the street. Minimum landscaping and open space. They had to do 40% on Whisper Creek, but they got you down to 20, but part of that's a ditch, and these properties don't have a good setback. Only one parking space per home is required, and Corey Stites told us the other night he calculated about 1,500 cars if they built 1,500 units, but if the property gets sold, which they can do, the owner could build 2,000 units. So no limit on the number of units that can be rentals, and you have been promoting that you've completed traffic studies, which is not true. We got Corey Stites and the developer to explain this to us the other night, and they explained to us that there could be a mill levy on the residents of Wheat Ridge to be able to accommodate this massive amount of traffic that you are going to put on us, the citizens, on 32nd and 38th Avenue. This is a very irresponsible action.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment tonight, so we will move to agenda item number one. This is the, I'm sorry. No, sir. We're moving on. Item number one is the Lutheran Legacy Campus Master Plan Developer. Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mayor. As you all know, Intermountain Health used a comprehensive request for proposal process to gauge interest from the development community for the sale of the former Lutheran Medical Campus. After thoroughly evaluating 10 distinct proposals, Intermountain narrowed the search down to three firms. City staff was able to interview those three finalists and did provide feedback to Intermountain. Ultimately, Intermountain finalized terms and conditions are currently under contract to sell the property to E5X. E5X is here this evening, Chris Elliott, to introduce himself, introduce the project, and take any questions you may have. Chris, you ready to go?
Mr. Mayor, council, it's a pleasure for us to be here. This is an exciting property that we have been watching for a long time, and we're very, very happy to have the opportunity to come in and develop it. Let me first say that I want to congratulate the city council and the citizens who worked together on the master plan. There was a lot of effort that was obviously taken to look at the property, look at the adjacent surroundings, look at the existing land uses that were in the vicinity, and what made sense on this very special 100 acres once the hospital and other medically, medical-related structures were gone. The master plan is very sensible, it's very practical, and it makes the process of integrating a property like this into the community just all that much more sensible. The concept of utilizing a mix of housing options and requiring that along the perimeters of the property, that they be similar in nature to the existing communities to the east, west, and south, or excuse, north, and to then move through that as a buffer, if you will, towards the center area that is contained within the two Lutheran parkways and allow there and only there for higher densities, a more intense residential use and mixed uses, and heights of structures. This allows for a logical means by which the property can work within that existing community. I've got a handful of slides here I want to share with you. Let me first tell you that we are just getting into the process of design. We wanted to see the efforts that you all had put into place, working with staff, working with the community, to secure in a thoughtful manner the master plan first, and then when it became apparent that the zoning code being a part of your city charter had limitations on height, that there be some thoughtful consideration to allowing additional height within the community, but concentrating it all within that center area. Having that particular effort go to the ballot last fall and be approved by an amount of 60, I think 67% of the overall vote is very impressive. It says that you are in tune with what the community wanted to see. And then to follow that up with a zoning code which was specific to the property that gets into everything from setbacks to open space to building heights to orientation of the various home styles that would be constructed here, made all the more sense. And then finally, following that up in April with an actual formal approval of a rezoning for the property, put all of that into place. So as we come into the issue now, we find that the plan is very well laid out. There is a logic to the restrictions and regulations. Let me tell you, it's by no means a simple process for us. There's a lot of conditions that are embedded in that zoning code that are obviously a result of the work that you all did with the community, and it mandates that a lot of things happen. Again, I talked about housing types and densities and heights, but it also talks about the preservation of the key structures that exist at the property today. The chapel being one of the keys, the blue house, which has been on a wide variety of foundations throughout the property since 1902 when it was first constructed. Those two things per the zoning have to remain, and we will work with the city and all other entities that have an interest to make sure that we put those particular structures to a viable and beneficial use within the community. We're gonna integrate those into the overall community. Beyond that, we have been studying what, how we wanted this to try and field. As I say, we want to make it a part of the community, but how do we do that? And we've been looking at initially tree preservation. You know, the Lutheran property possesses a fairly significant number of existing mature trees. A lot of those follow the parkways and are in medians within the parkways, they're along the perimeters. They're everything that you would ever hope for in terms of being able to adequately buffer what it is that we do back into the existing community. So we're really blessed with an opportunity to make use of all of that. We have a, what has become a primary focus, open space that runs through the middle of the property and along the Rocky Mountain Ditch. And though the ditch is there, it's on a fairly steep embankment, it's not real practical in the way it's, and usable as the way it's constructed today, but in our preliminary conversations with the ditch company, we have been able to move forward with a plan to put that ditch with any pipe and then regrade that area between the high and the low areas so that we can really make that open space stand out and become a place where we can do a lot of active programming. There's already a trail that runs through that. We would enhance that. We would enhance the other additional open space so that it becomes a more active and usable park area. And then that'll be connected on, that'll be in essence our east-west access, and then we will construct the north-south access that intersects that about midpoint between the two parkways. So we're starting to get into that design now. We're also getting into the layout of the various housing types that can go within the community. Let me take you through that a little bit. The image that you see here, again, is a point that we can start at to talk about what we want some of the architecture and some of the perimeter images to look like. One of the things that we really like is the towers that are part of the old hospital building, and those of you that have been here a long time, you know that that building started out as a really special architectural structure. It had two images on either end of it that were, in essence, the same architectural design, the chapel being one of those, and then there's actually one on the opposite end that mirrors the chapel. And you've got the tile, red tile roofs, you've got the ubiquitous blonde brick that is on every structure that's there, and we want to try and incorporate those same kinds of things here. This would be an image of the entryway. And again, I want to really emphasize that this is initial efforts to do this. We want to continue to get feedback from you all and from the community as to exactly what we want to try and present. You gotta push the right buttons, right?
Sometimes you do. Sometimes you don't.
There we go. Looks good. Oh, yes. There we go. This is an image at night of the same look. Legacy is a name that's been used a lot with this particular property. Everybody refers to it as the Lutheran Legacy Campus, and legacy means something, and it's a word that identifies that it's something that carries beyond a given generation and is something that's looked back on as something that defines a particular image or a part of a bigger thing. And the notion of incorporating the legacy name into the ultimate name of the community is something that we think is pretty important. Again, the history of the campus, you know, the original hospital structure was built in 1921. That has been added to it, seems every 20 years, there's another element that gets, that was added to it, and a lot of times those elements were not necessarily architecturally pleasing, they were functional. And so you end up with a lot of the character and vision for the original hospital got built over or torn down in the process. There we go. This is a note of the various consultants and the team that has worked with us on this, everybody from environmental consultants to traffic consultants to civil engineers. Here's the plan that we have before you now. This plan has changed about 10 times. I think we have 10 different images of it with slight modifications to reflect additional things that we'd like to add, and we're in the process of working towards a finalization of it. The area that is shown in yellow along the outside, you've got, of course, 38th at the top, 32nd on the bottom. Dudley is on the left-hand side. The yellow area would be a lower-density residential in keeping with the requirements of the zoning that say you need to incorporate home design and home product that's similar to that which is adjacent. In this case, it's duplex and single-family detached. The light blue area along Dudley is in keeping with what's on the west side of Dudley, and we are mandated there to have lots that are a minimum of 50 feet in width. There is a 30-foot height limitation, which would in essence get you a story and a half in terms of building heights, and then no driveways would access Dudley. The driveways would all come from the east side, and everybody's garage would be in the back. The darker blue on this plan is a townhome product in the center there, and then there is some of that along the lower right-hand side. We've looked at moving that in two or three different places. This is one place that we had in mind that makes sense, again, concentrating those densities in the middle. The tan areas would be the higher-density multifamily. Along the 38th corridor, there is an area designated as civic, which would represent an opportunity, and I think you'll hear from Anderson Hallis here shortly, about utilization of portions of the old hospital that I mentioned before that have that real architectural flair for future civic purposes. So we've been working with city staff on what might make some sense in that particular location to be able to accommodate the needs of the city. And then to the right, there is a area that's designated for future retail, and again, zoning requires that we provide a minimum of 10,000 square feet of retail as a part of the overall community. This particular slide shows the open space and green belts that are planned along, again, the parkway areas, the parks themselves, the promenade that extends from the green belt in the middle towards that civic function, and then the other park and open spaces that are spread out throughout the site. This is the building height limitation that, again, is part of the master plan, part of what was approved, with the low heights, lower densities along the west and south and east sides, and then going higher in density as you get towards the middle, with the highest concentration of building heights and density in the pink area on the area north of the Rocky Mountain Ditch. This is an image that we think is very interesting because this shows the site, looking at it from, on high, from the southwest corner, and everything is white with the intention of being able to show that there's no distinction from structure to structure, but the actual houses that are there are shown by the footprint that is represented by the particular white box in front of them. You can see the parkways going through the site, and then you can see the various lower densities on the, again, the west, south, east sides, and then moving inside the parkways, the higher densities that would exist, with finally the highest densities along the north area, the area north of the Rocky Mountain Ditch. And again, we were looking and working hard on the images that you would see when you come in from 38th. The wall that's shown is for display of signage. We're still working on how we integrate that with landscaping because we'd like to reduce the amount of fencing and utilize more in the way of landscaping to define boundaries. It's, again, the same image at night. And then this is the entrance at 38th and Lutheran Parkway North, which is the easterly And the clicker stops. I think that may be it. I think with that, I'd be happy to answer questions. Oh, oh, yes. Thank you. This is an image, again, an initial image of what things would look like along Dudley. We want to try and create an image that is very similar to what you see on Dudley, but nonetheless defines where the legacy community would be. So story and a half homes there, and then some type of a entry treatment that runs along Dudley. This would be the park area that would be along Dudley. It would be at about the midpoint along Dudley and would integrate back towards the open space along the Rocky Mountain Ditch. We notice the fox that you have. We notice the fox that you have outside and the importance of a fox in Wheat Ridge, and we want to honor that. And so we're looking at some custom structures that we could place within the park areas. Images within the higher-density multifamily areas that would show the open space that would be created, that the buildings would be centered around. And then we're looking to utilize the water rights that come with the property to not only create the water features that we have, but also be able to utilize that great resource to irrigate the common areas, the landscaped areas within the community. Now I got to the end.
Okay. Okay. We will start our questioning with Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, and thanks for your presentation. May I just ask you, could you maybe for, just expand a little bit more on, like, kind of your background, like yourself and kind of your connection to Lutheran and, like, Jefferson County and all of that?
Oh, absolutely. I grew up in Jefferson County. I went to Arvada West High School. I'm a proud Wildcat, went to the University of Colorado, fifth-generation Coloradoan. My mother actually worked at Lutheran Hospital for about 20 years. And I have the dubious honor of having spent three weeks there having my appendix out. So, deep, deep connection there. The hospital meant a lot to us. It was a very important piece to our family. I've been in the land development business for some 40-plus years and with a concentration in, well, it's all been in the Denver metro area. Done communities, number of communities in Jefferson County, and they've been large and small. We did Leiden Rock in Arvada as well as Whisper Creek. Leiden Rock was almost 1,500 residential units. Whisper Creek, about 900 residential units, a mix with some retail and office. Did communities in Evergreen. We have another community that's on the border of Wheat Ridge and Arvada, known as Haskin Station at Ridge Road and just east of Ward Road. And then we're, we've been active in Thornton, Aurora, and we have other communities in Parker right now.
Thank you. I just have one other follow-up question. With all your years with working in development, how often do you see a process like we took on with this campus where we did a legislative rezone? Can you just kind of explain a little bit more about, like, kind of the benefits of having it go through that process?
We have looked to participate in a lot of, a lot of different communities just like this, where there's a unique and special piece of property that is going to move forward, either redevelopment or it's something that's been passed over because of this reason or that reason in the past. And the, what we've seen a lot of is that the communities don't pay a lot of attention to that. They defer, in a lot of cases, to the development community to come up with something to make it work. And the historical aspects of it are not as much of a key. It's more about, let's do something with this, come up with the land use and move on. And it was, it has been very refreshing to have a situation that we come into and we have combed the zoning code and the requirements of the master plan and the zoning approval. And the pieces that are in place, like I said before, are not easy. They're not easy for us to have to comply with, but they really create an awesome community. This is going to be really special. And when you realize that there was a whole effort undertaken with the community over many years to come up with a master plan that made sense, that worked for everybody, I mean, it got right down into the Dudley alignment, for example. Story and a half houses, you've got to have single-family detached houses that do that. And by the way, you can't put garages on the, on the street side. That's incredible that there was that much thought. But from a marketing perspective, that allows us to push the building community into creating something that's going to be really special. And it's not going to be a typical suburban community with, where every builder has five plans and they build the same five over and have two or three elevations and that's it. That's not what's going to happen. So it's been great.
Thank you. Counselor Oma.
Thank you, Mayor. The first one is for Patrick. Could you remind me, and you can get back to me if you want, what is the maximum, maximum number of units for this entire project?
Yeah, so our city charter does restrict density to 21 dwelling units per acre. So this acreage is about 100 acres, so they could build up to about 2,100 units on this site based on charter, which is allowed anywhere in the city.
Anywhere in the city?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I don't, I believe this, right now, is the last number I sold, or maybe around 1,500?
Yeah, it's somewhere between 1,300 and 1,500.
1,500, so well under what's allowed. Well under what the charter is. Thank you. And then a couple of questions I have is, right now, along Dudley, on the east side of Dudley where this project is, there's nothing but weedy, non-native Siberian elms. I know what they are, and they grow up, and they're just weeds. It looks to me like there's going to be a lot of really nice trees along that Dudley Street, and not just a couple, like, quite a few. I don't know what the spacing, the spacing would be, but it looks like a lot of nice, beautiful trees on that side.
Absolutely. You know, growing up on this side of town, trees were very important. It seemed like we didn't have that many, so we needed to preserve everything that we had.
And then do you know the existing median that Lutheran Parkway right now, I know that it's, it's currently just, like, irrigated grass that tends to generally run off quite a bit. Is that going to be revamped?
Yes. We are going to take a look at what we can do to enhance that, make it better, make it function better. So we're in that process right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Holtein.
Thank you so much for coming tonight and presenting this. And since I last saw these, there's even more graphics, so it really helps a lot. I really liked the aerial that showed the different forms. I have a couple of questions, and it's a mix between staff and the developer. So we heard from a constituent tonight expressing disappointment in the amount of open space on this project. So it's my understanding it's 20% open space?
Yeah, the zoning that you approved requires 20% open space, which is 20 acres out of the 100 acres, which is double of what we require on any other development in the community.
Okay, so that was going to be my next, so this is actually double.
Double, correct.
Would typically be expected, okay. And then we heard some confusing comments around not having done a traffic study, and it was my understanding that we actually, there was some traffic studying done as part of the community engagement and master planning process. Is that correct?
Yeah, I know there's traffic studies happening right now, which are being reviewed by staff. I can't remember if the master planning process, Lauren, if there was, there was during the master planning process as well.
Okay, yeah.
And I believe it was, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're indicating, at least at this point, traffic's going to be equal or less than what is, was there when the hospital was there.
I'm confirming because that's what we had heard. So we have done some traffic studying. And then other questions, so we also heard tonight that the city is planning a gigantic mill levy to pay for this for all the citizens of Wheat Ridge. Is that something that's been discussed?
Yes, it has. City Council did approve a service plan for a metropolitan district, but just for this campus. So this 100-acre campus, any residential development and commercial would pay an additional mill levy, correct? But not for anybody else.
Okay, so just for the, this particular campus and?
Correct. And the mill levy would go to pay for the infrastructure, so the city won't have to pay for anything, and the maintenance of the infrastructure as well, so there would be no general tax dollars maintaining this or developing this project.
Okay. And then just, I think, the last thing I just want to comment on, and then I've got a couple, a couple of thoughts. So we also heard a request tonight that we should, that the citizens should have a right to vote on this. And we do allow citizens' right to referendum, so if council has made a decision and there are enough people in our community who don't think this is the right decision, then the citizens have a right to referendum them, and I respect that. I think that's one of the things that makes us inclusive democracy. We have heard from a majority of people who we heard from on November, or April 28th, were in support of this, and our citizens have voted overwhelmingly in support of the ballot initiative and the long master planning process. So we are, we are listening to our citizens. We're not just listening to city staff. So I think it's an engaged dialogue. So with that, I just wanted to make sure we're all clear about what we're talking about tonight. So I really, again, I really like that visual that really shows, and part of it is that it just, it looks like a neighborhood, and we're talking about building a neighborhood here. And I really like the thought that has gone into, you know, how did the different pieces come together? I am really sympathetic to Walt, who talked about having to live across the street from a construction zone. It's going to take a long time to build this out. Can you maybe talk a little bit about what your plans are for both the demolition and, like, how you would come in as a developer, actually doing active construction in the neighborhood?
Sure. Let me first say that we will engage with the community, and it's our intent, we have an obligation to do a general neighborhood meeting, but it is also our intent to engage in micro-meetings, if you will. The Dudley Street folks is one example. We're going to sit down with them and go through what we're thinking. What's the image that we want to try and create? What's important to them? We've shown some, some concepts here that we think might be nice. We want to hear from them. We'll work with them on those kinds of things. As it relates to construction, we want to be thoughtful in how that happens. We want to make sure that, that traffic management during a construction period is taken care of, that it's safe and efficient, it's not noisy, that it's not done at unacceptable hours. They, we've talked to, at this point, about four different demolition contractors that have, that are in the process of putting together their proposals to do the demolition on the hospital and the other structures. And every single one of them came back and said, as a part of what we do, we want an opportunity to sit down with the community and go through exactly what this is going to look like, what's going to sound like, what, all of it. And so we're going to do that. We had somebody at one of the, one of the district meetings who said that he didn't want to have to hear construction traffic on a Saturday morning at 5:00 in the morning. And I said, I don't either, because if that happens to you, you're going to call me, and then I'm going to be interrupted about that, too. So we need to have a partnership with the community going through to get these things done. It's, it's not going to be fast, but it needs to be deliberate and intentional, the way we work through it.
Great. Last question, in the visuals, we heard tonight that some of that open space is going to be a ditch, but I didn't see a ditch in any of the pictures. And I seem to remember you had said something about you're working with the ditch company to underground that and pipe it.
Correct. That, that agreement, we're already moving forward with Rocky Mountain Ditch, to put the ditch into a pipe. And I was remiss in not saying that earlier. But that'll open up that whole open space and make it really functional without the ditch being present.
Great. I just want to thank you, you came to a district to meeting, and just to give an example of how much, you know, in my experience, that you're really thinking about the interface with our community is, there's a little pinch point where this property comes up against the ditch and comes into the Allison Court neighborhood. And as a bike advocate for over a decade in this community, that little pinch point for a long time has been really important connectivity, and we were delighted to hear you already talking to the city about ways to address that. So I just appreciate you and partnering with the city to not just develop the property, but solve some of the other issues that we're looking at, so.
Yeah, we spent a couple hours out there the last week, walking up and down the ditch bank and looking at that corner to see exactly how we can make the connection the least disruptive way possible.
Appreciate it. One, just a piece of feedback, I shared this with Patrick. The, I really love what a landmark look this is. It's really distinctive. I want to be really sensitive, especially along 38th Avenue, to creating too much separation between this, this neighborhood and the surrounding neighborhoods. So I would really love to see, you know, I love the distinctive signage, I love the porticoes over the, you know, sidewalks, like, all pedestrians should be treated like royalty. But I'd love to really see using more landscaping along 38th, and I think you mentioned this in your comments, but I think over-usage of vertical separation along there isn't going to be as inviting, and I think one of the things makes Wheat Ridge great is we walk our neighborhoods. And as somebody who crosses that street and walks up there a couple times a week, I'd love for that to feel really inviting, and I'm sure it'll work with us on that.
No, absolutely. In fact, that's another spot that we've engaged in a lot of time out there, because, as you know, it drops off from 38th down to the parking lots that are down, that are there adjacent. What can we do to pick that back up, take that sidewalk, have it meander way into the property? Again, there's a ton of beautiful, mature evergreens that run along 38th. Let's save them, and like, come up with a way that you can bring that bike path and walking paths through there.
Awesome. Well, we have a long, long history ahead of us, so looking forward to it. Thank you.
That's right.
Thank you. Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Chris or staff, could you maybe speak to the assurances of preserving those historical buildings and repurposing them?
I'll start and let Chris finish that, but again, in the zoning, the zoning does require that the Blue House Chapel and the TB tent are all preserved and, yes, used, incorporated into the development.
And, and we have to abide by that because that's part of the zoning. But we need to come up with a way to really make those things, those features stand out and really be functional. We don't want to create a, take the chapel, for instance, and say, okay, it's there, it's going to stay, and then nothing ever happens. We need to do something that creates a vibrancy and a use for that chapel, that structure going forward. Same thing with the other two. It has to be something that's celebrated as a part of everything that's done. You know, there's been discussion of, well, you need to, you need to get a landmark designation. I don't know exactly what that obligates us or the parties that are providing that to. We'll be happy to investigate that. At the end of the day, we are going to save those facilities and make them vibrant parts of the, the community.
I really appreciate you bringing renderings, just to kind of get a good idea of what you're thinking. I love the blonde brick. Is that actually a plan to incorporate that into?
That, that's a key component.
Okay, yeah, I love, I love how well that goes with the neighborhood, and it's just those, those roses, those, those blue brick roses, or the white rose, actually, that, that we base the Call Your Hospice on and had an event every year to support hospice, which is still on that campus. So I also wanted to ask in regards to more of a timeline. So, so if moving forward, are you going to do a phased approach for development? What does that look like and dates of breaking ground and moving forward?
Sure. It's our hopes that we can work with staff and secure remaining approvals we need yet this year and then immediately get started. The goal would be to concentrate on upgrading the parkways so that they're functional. Bike paths along those, staff has made it clear that those are, and we want them to be a key part of that, but we're going to concentrate on rebuilding those and getting that core infrastructure in place. And then we'll start probably at the southerly end with the lower-density residential and then move north along the outsides of the parkways and then move inside once that stuff's
Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. And that was essentially the question I was going to ask. Chris, help me, help us understand how this big project moves forward. I'm anticipating, well, I'm just kind of guessing that, looking at designated planning area 1, 2, 3, 4. Is, does each one of those planning areas get its own development company? Or is this something that you guys will have your, your hands on kind of as you go forward? And what would be the, you bring in an outside company to develop a certain area? How does that relationship between you guys and the other company work?
We're still working through exactly how we're going to try and do it. But I can tell you that we're going to be involved in every single step. There, we will bring in builders that will actually construct the, the homes. And they will be subject to additional site design standards that we're going to put into place, that are going to deal with everything from architecture to landscaping within each individual lot. In fact, we're working with Wheat Ridge Water and Denver Water now on what types of landscaping there would be within the individual yards. So we will impose a significant number of conditions based upon the builder interest that we have. We're going to see them agreeing to some fairly stringent standards as to what they can do from materials, again, to home appearances, architecture, all of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This question is for Patrick. You know, much like we did with the Wadsworth project where we had a hotline, or would that be something that we would try to set up for, for this type of project, where we had updates and a hotline on what's up Wheat Ridge?
Yeah, definitely. Well, and as you've heard from Chris this evening, he's very, he likes to engage with the neighbors and, and stay, stay in touch. And we'll do that in partnership with him and the city and using our resources as well. So.
Counselor Snell.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick, Chris, if you wouldn't mind just talk for just a moment about discussions or plans or anything that you have with the two existing offices and the hospice facility, how things might affect them, how those conversations are, anything that, that you have to share with, with us about that?
Sure. The hospice will remain. We're not, we're, we're working to integrate that into the plan. So you'll have consistency in landscaping and the treatment and so forth, the exterior access, all of that. And then the office building that is in the northwest corner will remain as well. And we're working with IMH on, because they retain that, on how to incorporate everything from deceleration lanes along 38th, access from the western parkway back into that parking facility, the landscaping, and those kinds of things are all part of that. So we're working with them on that. The West Pines facility will be razed. And we're working, the, the three buildings that are in the middle, that medical office buildings are not owned by IMH. And we're working with the owner of those three buildings to integrate them into the plan. It's our intention to have them be part of what we do.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Protim Stikes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank you, Chris. We had our District Three meeting the other night. It was scheduled from 6:30 to 8:00. And I think the rec center crew kicked us out at nine. We, we, we were still going. And Chris was answering questions and, and doing a great job. And you kind of saw that tonight, that it seems like you have a real dedication to kind of the history and, and the legacy of this legacy, right? It's, it's, it's pretty good. We had a couple of speakers tonight, and I appreciate Counselor Holte for kind of clarifying some of the, the facts of it. But I don't recall you and I talking about a mill levy or, or anything like that for the, for the city.
Not at all.
Yeah, no.
No, they're, we're not seeking any participation from the city for anything. All of this will be done within the, the campus boundary. And we did create a metropolitan district. And as you might imagine, with the, the costs associated with bringing the old hospital down, with all of the other improvements, when you have utilities that were installed 75, 80 years ago, there's a lot of upgrading that needs to be done. And so we'll utilize that metro district for those particular purposes. But that's it. And as Patrick said, it's all within the existing property.
Okay, thank you. Patrick or, or Chris, during the process of the, the master planning and the rezoning, this was all initiated by the city, not by the developer, right? He's, the developer, E5X is coming at this now late. Is that correct?
Correct. E5X does not own the property yet, still. They're under contract, but they came in late. We started the master planning process in 2021, or we approved it in 2021, right? Lauren, does that sound right? 2021, is that when the master plan was approved? Yeah. So it started obviously during COVID. We had a lot of outdoor public engagement. But yeah, none of the interested developers were at the table at that time.
Right, okay.
And the city initiated the master plan process. We asked SCL, who owned the property at the time, to participate in that. And they agreed, and they actually paid for that process.
So this is a citizen, this is a city-driven, citizen-driven, not a developer-driven process, right?
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to, just wanted to clarify that again. And I want to clarify again, I'm not a traffic engineer, and I certainly don't make any statements about traffic. So I don't, don't know anything about that. But I do appreciate when people come to our meetings and, and engage with us civically. One more question. And I know during the construction at the 32nd and Kipling and those houses that were built there, we, I got to know the construction hours pretty well. But what are the city's, like mandated construction hours that?
We're 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, right, Lauren? Does that sound right? Yes, thumbs up. 7:00 AM, 7:00 PM.
Right. And there's some more restrictive for various things. But 7:00 AM, 7:00 PM, and, and the citizens who live around there, I think it was Counselor Holte that was talking about construction, they'll be able to contact either the developer or the construction company that's working, or code enforcement, or?
Yeah, probably all of the above. And again, we'll have plenty of information out there about how to file complaints. And, you know, we want to make sure that the streets around the, the campus are being cleaned as well, from dirt, excess dirt, and anything in that nature. Obviously, again, there is going to be some noise. There is going to be, I live in the neighborhood, too, and it is going to, there is going to be impact. We can't stop everything, but we'll do as much as we can to make sure that it's controlled.
I've had some residents reach out, you know, obviously District Three surrounds this property on, on almost all the sides. But, and talk about like they're worried about construction workers parking in their neighborhoods and things like that. I mean, it's 100 acres. So is there, I'm, I'm sure there's a way to make sure that the construction traffic and all that stuff is contained at the site, right? Not into the neighborhoods, not on Cody and, and all the other streets around there. Is that feasible?
Yeah. And we can require that as part of the building permits. There's plenty of space on the campus.
Absolutely.
Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. Could you go back to that sheet five of the packet? It's the one that has an overview, frozen again, versus Lutheran Conceptual Plan 14? Is that the one you were looking at? Well, I think it was a, it was a different one. Go. Oh, and the, that's fine, Chris. Go back to that other one that you had. So on that, on the very east side, where there's like a path and it kind of, kind of intersects that Rocky Mountain ditch, looks like it kind of wants to connect. So my, my question is, is I know that the city, we're building that sidewalk, and we're, we're looking at the Rocky Mountain ditch connection on the, on the Waldsworth side. And I don't know how far we've gotten in conversations with Rocky Mountain Ditch. Have they said, yes, if you have the money, you could, you could pipe it and that'd be okay? Or, or something changed now because they're redeveloping the entire property that at least the, the Lutheran Legacy Campus is getting the okay to denigrate? I'm just wanting to, I'm just wanting to like, if, if there's conversations being had. I'm not saying that we, we spend the money or ask the developer to spend money, but just like, if, if there's a door that's open, can we just say like, hey, we're very interested in doing it, maybe not right now, but?
Yeah, the conversations that are being had today are just within the campus, which Chris mentioned. We did, city had conversations with Rocky Mountain Ditch several years ago about extending that trail all the way through out to Wadsworth. They weren't very receptive at that time. They've been actually, you know, if, if Chris was not agreeable to piping the ditch, they were going to fence it along this campus. And that's what they want to do with some of the other ditches around the community. They, they want, they want, I think they want to take away the potential liability that they may have of people using the ditches, getting hurt. So they weren't real receptive of, of doing any more with the ditch that goes out to Wadsworth. But we could have those conversations again.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of just laying some groundwork, like right now, if they're open-minded to it, you know, just get something like, hey, we, we'd like to get to a point where we could reserve that right if we want to underground it and just continue, make that into a, a trail, you know? Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as a fellow fifth generation Coloradan, whose mom also went to A West and graduated from there, yeah. I just want to discuss like how wonderful that the intention was to put all these parameters and buffers in place during the master plan process, so that we could attract the right developer. And I love that SCL and Intermountain selected a, a local developer who focuses and prioritizes all of their projects locally, because I, I think it really is a testament to the design and the renderings that you've already produced in regards to respecting the historical nature, as well as the community aspects. And so like, we, we did that on purpose, right? Like we had, we did all of that pre-planning and, and master plan, public input processes, so that we could really pave the way for what it was that we wanted to have it look like, and find the right developer to, to turn that vision into a reality. And so like, it's, I really appreciate just these, these initial renderings of, of what could be.
Thank you. Okay. Well, Chris, I don't have any more questions from the council right now. Has anybody got any more before we tell Chris thank you very much and, and let you, excuse you from, from this part of the discussion? So thank you very much for bringing your team and, and for showing us your project at this particular time.
Thank you all. We really appreciate it. We're looking forward to working with you.
Thank you. Okay. With that, we will turn to our agenda item number two. This is a, the municipal, municipal facility feasibility and planning draft report.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So during the 2022 budget process, City Council asked staff to prepare a facilities master plan to assess the current and future needs of city facilities. The city at that time contracted with StanTech to develop a comprehensive facility master plan for all primary city functions, with the goal of developing a roadmap and living documents for facility decisions over the next decade. City Council consensus was reached at February 5th, 2024 study session to move forward with the recommendations of the, the master plan and to bring back next steps. One of those next steps was to contract with an architectural firm to explore the potential reuse of the Lutheran Legacy Campus as a future home for, we were City Hall and Police Department. City Council approved a contract with Anderson Hollis on September 23rd of last year for this work. Representatives are here this evening. I'll introduce Rebecca Silva, and she can introduce the rest of the team. They have a presentation with some of their recommendations from their work.
Thank you, Patrick. And thank you all for your time. It's a pleasure to be here. And let me make sure I can, okay, great. As Patrick mentioned, I'm Rebecca Silva. I'm with Anderson Hollis Architects. I also have Noel Michael and Will Squire here from our office. And we are with Anderson Hollis. We are a 35-year-old firm located here in Golden, and we specialize in civic and community work. We offer a balance of historic preservation and new construction, and all with a focus on sustainability and contextual design. So as you can imagine, we were thrilled with the potential for this project. We were hired last fall, as Patrick mentioned, to study the potential for reusing portions of the existing hospital building. And the Lutheran site has been a cornerstone of the Wheat Ridge community for over 100 years. And we're just very honored to be a part of this project. This, this very meaningful and very substantial building. So I will give a little bit of background. At Anderson Hollis, we are passionate about creating designs of the place. So we really want to find a, a way to make this of Wheat Ridge. And our first walkthrough of this massive, massive building, we saw a unique potential, not only to collate, co-locate city government here, but also to preserve and celebrate the unique history of the site in this community. So I'm going to do a, go through a little bit of breakdown of the history of this building because there are so many pieces. So I want to try and help you all understand. I think you're all familiar with the site by now. But our focus was north of the ditch and, and south of 38th, and then between the two parkways. So the history of this site started in, well, with the first construction in 1921 of the Tuberculous Sanitarium. And it had a central pavilion there with two wings. You can see a historic aerial photo up in the, the top right. And it, as you can see, was a little bit more rural back then. And folks came from all over the country to come here for colorless fresh air and the healing climate, which we think fittingly relates to the importance of occupant health and wellness in today's built environment. So in 1932, they built two additions. The one on the far left there, which is east, is the chapel, which is still existing. And then on the far, or the one closest, the little red bar closest to us, is the women's wing, also built in 1932. And those are both still existing. They're a little bit hidden by all of the later additions. Then in 1960, they built an addition on the south side of the west wing. And then in 1967, they built another addition on the north side of the west wing. Then in 1970, they built a very large seven-story addition to the south. 1972, the separate medical office building to the south. Then 1984 through 1990, they added a few more additions, one of which is also another very large seven-story tower. And this also connected that medical office building to the rest of the hospital. Then in 1985 to 1991, a few more single-story additions on the south side of the 1970 tower. Then 1992, a two-story plus a basement addition that currently housed, or not currently anymore, but did house the emergency department. And then finally, in 2008, the purple there is the six-story tower that is facing on 38th. Unfortunately, when they built this, they also demolished the original central pavilion and the east wing of the original sanitarium building. So this is our, our big puzzle that we started with, trying to understand the building itself. And we had several site visits, trying to, to discern the, the difference between the multiple additions and and trying to identify what, what could potentially be reused. So along with that, we also tried to understand the city's needs and their workflows. So we did that through reviewing and vetting the previous master plan that was completed. We also had walkthroughs of their existing spaces here in the city hall and the P N S B building, interviews with department leadership and questionnaires as well. So the intent here is we've basically looked at all of the city departments with the intention to co-locate all of them at the Lutheran campus. A separate part of our, our scope is going to be looking at the combined shops for Parks and Rec and Public Works. So we'll be probably back here in a few weeks to talk to you all about that. But want to focus on the, the Lutheran campus for now. And then we just wanted to, to make sure that it was clear the rec center was staying as is. But all the other city departments and functions would be co-located to this one location. Okay, so we looked at, after we, we did all this analysis, we looked at many different options and reviewed those with city staff. The first one was looking at the 2008 tower. It is the most current or the most recent addition. Some challenges there were it's a very large floor plate, which makes it much more square footage than is needed. So the, the city programming that we came up with would only take up about the first two stories of that. So then the, the rest of the four stories would have to be a tenant of some sort. So that produces its own challenges for security and wayfinding and a public civic presence. And then the large, the large size also is challenging for daylighting and, and organizing spaces within there. So the second option we looked at, and these are in not really any particular order, but we'll get to our preferred alternative after we go through these quickly. The second one was looking at the historic wing along with the 1960s portion and a portion of the 2008 building. So some challenges there would be re-cladding portions that are currently covered by other additions. So where they've put an addition on existing, on a previous addition, that condition of the exterior wall there would be unknown. So there'd be some, some work there and a lot of unknowns, which that's no surprise for, for a project like this. But the, the 1960s has pretty low ceilings and it would require a lot of interior reconfiguration. And then we would still have to have tenants for the, to fill up the rest of the 2008 section. So the next option we looked at was reusing the 1998 section. And you can see the photo there, there's some, some nice brutalist style architecture there, which is, I say nice, but I know not everyone agrees with, with that aesthetic assessment. But the, some challenges here would be the, there wouldn't be a presence on 38 that would be kind of tucked behind other uses. Likely need to re-clad some of the exterior to improve the thermal envelope. And this also wouldn't preserve the, the primary historic original sections of the sanitarium. Then we looked at reusing the 1992 section. And this was, square footage wise, too large to house just the police and courts and then not large enough to house all of the city needs. Another challenge here was it has a full basement, but, which could house some of the more secure police needs, but it was a, a lot more square footage than was needed. So it would be a largely unusable space on the, on the basement level. And then again, the, the very large floor plate would really be a challenge to get daylighting into those spaces. And then lastly, before we get to the preferred, the existing city hall, we did look at reusing this as was a recommendation in the, the previous facilities master plan. And some challenges there is that it would require an addition to house everyone here, the site itself. We're, we're kind of landlocked by residential and the park and providing all of the site needs, the parking, secure parking for police as well as the additional building square footage. It's just too small. And then the, another concern there would be phasing. That would be a challenge to try and find a how, a home for all of the city functions that happened here while it was being renovated. So where we landed on our preferred alternative, we proposed to restore and reuse the original portions of the 1921 wing and also the 1932 wing that are still existing. We would re-clad the areas where the adjacent buildings would be removed. This would allow us to significantly improve the thermal envelope and energy efficiency of the building. So the, the next piece, the center pavilion, we would propose a reimagined central pavilion to reflect what the historic configuration was. Not necessarily a, a direct reconstruction, but a, a reimagining, we'll call it. And then there would be another addition in the blue behind the historic wing, which would house the police department. And so there would be, this would include a courtyard in the central area, which would provide daylighting for all of the spaces. The gray areas to the east, which are on the left-hand side here, would be the, the existing chapel. We would propose to keep that. And then some sort of connection, again, to reflect that historic configuration. And we've considered, we've looked at, at options like a, a colonade that could be used for outdoor civic uses and events or potentially a library or other community uses. So some benefits of this, it does give us a significant amount of embodied carbon savings through reusing as much of the existing as possible. And we would love to, to be able to study some other options of the buildings that are being demolished. What can we reuse out of them? There's a lot of brick that could be reused that has a pretty high embodied carbon content anyway. So a lot of options there. It has an optimal east-west access, which is great for passive solar and photovoltaics. And then the courtyard, as I mentioned, providing daylight for the majority of spaces, adding a touch of biophilia and prioritizing that occupant health and wellness. So I'm going to quickly go over some of our graphic conceptual floor plans here. And as I mentioned, we do have a basement here in the, on the basement floor plan on the far left. And the police department would be in the blue. And that would be things that may not need daylighting, such as their, their booking, evidence and storage, and then additional city hall storage in the peach color. One thing, excuse me, I'll get to when I get to the site plan, is we are also proposing a structured parking space that would allow below-grade access to the police department. So that way we can have the Sally Port and the secure spaces below grade and that's not happening out in the open adjacent to the residential areas. So then the first floor would be split between the M C offices, which is municipal court, police department and some more courthouse, or I mean, community uses, public uses for the city hall. Things like the, the city council chambers, courtrooms, public meeting spaces, that sort of thing. This does give us the possibility of two distinct entrances, one for the police and one for city hall. And then the second and third floors would house the rest of city hall functions as well as some potential for additional outdoor break areas. So one thing you will notice, we do have five different floor plans on here. And I don't want to get too far into the weeds, but the reason for that is because the floor-to-floor heights for the historic piece is lower than we would need for traditional buildings today with all of our H V C equipment and, and things like that. So we've placed higher, larger public-sized spaces on the first floor. So that's why we have the kind of strategic offset of the second and third floors between those, which also allows a little bit more preferred separation between the police functions and the rest of city hall functions. I should also mention, feel free to interrupt me if something's not clear. So on to our site plan. You can see that we've attempted to recreate the historic configuration of the original sanitarium on 38th, which provides a welcoming entry plaza and a civic presence on 38th Avenue. And as I mentioned, the potential for dedicated public entrances for both police and city hall. We would propose minimal modifications to the parking, the surface parking along the front. And that would serve both city staff and the public needs as well as a library or, or whatever community entity might occupy the, the space to the east as well as the chapel. So the parking structure that we noted is in white and off to the left, which is west. And the intent there is, as I mentioned, would be for that to be, provide subgrade parking that would be secure, dedicated for police. That would also incorporate that Sally Port that would provide direct access into the basement of the police department. We've included a vehicular drive around the building and that would provide separation from the surrounding residential areas as well as provide emergency egress and access. To the southeast a little bit there, we have a community open space that would be south of where the chapel is. And that could be, could include a potential for an amphitheater for outdoor community events. Also would be a great location for a geothermal well field to heat and cool the building. And then the intent there too is to, to seamlessly connect to those open spaces that Chris was just mentioning earlier, provided in the, the residential development to the south. Okay, so we've put together, obviously all of this is very preliminary, but we did put together a rough order of magnitude costs for this based off of cost per square foot. And we've split it into a couple of different categories for easy tracking. But all of those together, we'd be looking about 82 million, just under 82 million. This does include a pretty significant contingency and then also escalation, assuming construction started in 2027. And then lastly, for planning purposes, we wanted to look at kind of what happens next? What, how long would this take? So we have, on the design side, we have schematic design through construction documentation. And that could overlap the hazardous materials abatement that would have to happen with the existing building as well as demolition of some of the adjacent additions. And then renovation and new construction. And then in total, we anticipate it would be approximately two and a half to three years for that. There are ways to escalate that, but that's a safe estimate. So that is the end. I'd be happy to take some questions.
That's it. Let's start with Councilor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for that presentation. Last year I had the, the honor of going up to Many Glacier and I was like, wow, such a beautiful building. And I'm from Montana, so, and it was like, you guys did a great job up there. So when I found out that you were selected, I was, I was really pretty happy.
Great.
I'll try to keep my comments short, but geothermal, check. Courtyard, check. Having more light, check. Reusing the chapel, check. And, and like having, keeping, you know, peeling back the onion and looking like what we used to have, totally check. I, I love that. And then like reusing that brick. I think that's, that's great. And so I am all aboard, all in favor of everything that you've proposed so far. My only question is, is how much input have you, have you gotten from staff? Cause that, you know, I, I can look at, I can say like, this looks great and what a great experience, but you know, the P, is the P D, have they bought into it? Has, you know, the rest of the staff, have they, has everybody kind of looked at and said, yeah, this is, this is something we're really going to support?
I would say mostly, and I would call on Patrick to, to join in that as well. We have, we did, as I mentioned, interviewed with all of the, the leadership team from all of the departments and, and generally all the feedback we've heard has been positive. I think there's, obviously the police department, there's a lot of challenges there, more so than, than some of the other departments. But we believe that there is potential to solve all of those with this option.
Thank you. Councilor Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I, and thank you for your presentation. And I'd like to say ditto to everything that Councilmember Ohm said. I do want to just point out, like in our packet, we've got several like steps and, and I don't know that they're necessarily things that we need to go through one-on-one, but I just want to call them out that, you know, there's, if we find consensus to move forward on this, we're finding consensus to advance the courtyard alternative, to commission a refined design development and cost elimination phase, to launch community engagement strategy, to explore funding opportunities and partnerships, and to consider a future library integration and strategic expansion, which I agree with all of those. One thing I would like to bring up is we, we have been put, what, the reason why I asked in 2002 for council to add a facilities plan in our budget was because we've been putting people in basically closets for offices to the point where we have no more closets. To the point where although because our recruitment doesn't necessarily show it on our police department because we're fully staffed in our police department, unlike a lot of our other surrounding communities, they don't have locker rooms, they don't have an exercise room, they don't have a training room. And, and, and so it's, these are things that we, that we need. We don't have the holding cells. I mean, these are all things we need, secure parking for them. And so I, I think that this is an absolutely fantastic plan. I, I want this for our community and I just want to remind everybody that we can have nice things.
Thank you. Councilor Dozeman.
Thank you. Just kind of reiterating, you know, another, another local organization coming in to do a local project and the level of detail that you, that you took pride in as far as preserving the historical, I mean, the infrastructure, the, the building. I mean, it just incorporates so many pieces that I think are unique to Wheat Ridge and this site that I really appreciate that we're holding on to. And I agree, I mean, we, we did this facilities master plan because we recognized that we were running out of room and we've been having to lease and, and rent multiple buildings to house our staff. And this building is really outdated and doesn't, and has a lot of limitations as did the Lutheran Legacy Campus, which is why Lutheran had to build a replacement hospital. That modern technology and those advancements are a significant component. I did want to see, I like, Councilmember Hoppy mentioned holding sale, holding cells, but have we discussed some sort of detention facility in addition to short-term holding cells or?
I wish the chief was here tonight to talk about it. Detention is the county's responsibility, not city's. And that would require pretty large expansion of our police department's public services to provide detention. There's many state laws, rules to have detention. You have to have, you'd have to have a full staff of detention officers. You have to feed them, you have to. So our police chief does not recommend going in the detention services. Leave that up to Kelly.
And have the staff or the city started to engage with, with the JUCO public libraries in regards to something of this nature?
We have. We've had a, a meeting, several meetings with them. They have this plan and they're considering it. And they are actually looking for new, different space in Wheat Ridge. I, I was told that Wheat Ridge and Golden are their two top priorities right now for new libraries. So we, I've actually toured them around the city, showed them probably seven, eight different sites, this one, including this one. And we met with them kind of recently in the last couple of months about this one specifically. So they're considering it.
Councilor Hoppe. All right, Hulteen, excuse me.
The other H, the other H. We have fewer Hs than we did on the last council. So a couple of things, I'm also, I was going to ask about geothermal and it just came out of your mouth. So that made me really happy. Some of my questions have been answered and I'm just going to be a little bit of like the, the pain in the butt tonight. I, so my father did historic preservation growing up. So just my dad and his partner saved the DNF Tower on the Mall. They did a lot of historic preservation. So just, it's in my blood. I do feel compelled to ask though, like Lutheran moved from the site to build a world-class hospital somewhere else. And with the amount of money that we're looking at to build a new facility, are we, I mean, are, are we missing out on the opportunity to build a modern, functional city hall by just starting from scratch, especially knowing that this building served us for a while until it didn't? And that our needs here to expand are being constrained. So I just, I feel compelled, if we're looking at this kind of money and we've got, you know, this opportunity, was, was building from scratch on the site considered?
It was, it was. It was not a strong consideration because there was a, a strong desire to reuse the existing or potentially reuse parts of the hospital. So we did look at, at a new ground up and there, there would be potential for that. I don't, I don't think there would be any sort of sacrifices, I will say, by reusing the existing. I think there's certainly the way we've arranged the program currently, there's actually some very nice adjacencies and separations that the existing building provides. And then also having that sort of new reimagined pavilion with the majority of the police department in a new construction on the backside, still provides all of those, those new technological advances and flexibility for the future.
Okay. Well, that sounds good. My only complaint is that it won't be done while I'm still in council. Oh, actually I did have a question. I'm, I'm assuming that the council chambers will be somewhere on the first floor.
It would be, yes.
Are they going to be magnificent?
Of course.
Okay. Thank you. Wait, I'm sorry, I have one more thing. To the actual questions in front of us, the third item is launching a community engagement strategy. That's obviously going to be incredibly important. I, I am very cognizant tonight that we're talking about, we have two agenda items that are big dollar tickets. And I'm a little hesitant about launching community engagement until we've got more clarity about what some of the moving forward options. So I, as much as I love getting out into the community and doing it quickly, I don't want to hide from the community, but I'd be really hesitant until we've got more clarity in this space, what some of the pathways forward would look like. I think it can, I, we can get people excited and then when we're like, oh, here's, we're going to have to make it happen. It can feel a little bit different. So I just, I would pause on number three until we've got a little bit more clarity on some of like what those pathways look like. And then like unabashedly go, go big on that. But so my recommendation is to pause on number three and I support the other four suggestions.
Thank you. Councilor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. And my, the first question was on, on the library and I believe we've covered that. So I do have a question about where the Parks and Rec and Public Works fits into this. We're going to, our next item on the agenda tonight is talking about a bit more pressing current issue with those two departments. So does this plan include those two departments in this campus?
It does not.
It does not include?
It does, it does not.
Thank you. Answers that question very quickly, then the other issue had, well, okay. All right, I'm going to hold off for now. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Potem Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I think this is, is fantastic. I agree with pretty much what, what everybody has said before me. One of the things I like about this is that, and, and in Wheat Ridge, history is very important to us, right? And, and this is a way to move forward as a community, new city hall, something we can be really proud of. But it also harkens back to our history and, and it brings back for, you know, for a lot of people, something they might have seen over the years as Lutheran has added on to itself. So I'm in favor of all of this. It was interesting to me the other night during our meeting, we, we talked a little bit about this and, and some of the residents were very taken aback. Apparently they hadn't heard about this, this plan and, and they kind of got a little conspiracy theory about it. But this is something we've been talking about since 2022, right?
Yeah, it's, it's been an iterative process and tonight's kind of really the first, first time we've provided this much detail to, to the council. But we've been talking about it through the facilities, obviously the facility master plan. And then we brought on the architect and it was all with the intent of looking at Lutheran Campus for city facilities.
Well, thank you. I'm, I'm in favor of all of this and obviously, you know, I think Council Hulteen is right. We need to be careful about our community engagement strategy if we don't have a way to make sure that this is a way to move forward. But once it's there, we need to go big. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Smell.
Thank you, Mayor. I too am really impressed with this and it's really exciting to think about these, the, just our, you know, our, our next iteration of where we're going to be. Can you talk, this might be more for Patrick, but can you talk a little bit about this building that we're currently in? Any discussions or what, what may happen here?
Yeah. You know, there were numerous options about trying to reuse this building. Maybe the police department or courts stay here. I think in the end, we decided that being all-in-one campus is, is more beneficial in this building. As you all know, as you've mentioned, it's, it was built in the seventies. It's very inefficient. Our facilities manager is here if he, if he wants to help speak to this. We just believe it's not worth putting any money into it. Does it make sense to waste more money on this building? Because it's just not going to give us what we need long-term. So there are options as you see in your staff memo, number, option number, or recommendation number four is to, if council decides to move forward, is to look at funding opportunities and how to finance this. And this property is an asset to the city that has got value to it. And maybe that's part of the funding options is we utilize the value of this property in some way to make a new campus work.
Got it. Okay, thank you. That makes sense. This building has served us really well and continues to. It's very elastic. Lots of, lots of stretching here, but thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Councilor Hulteen.
Thank you. I got so excited about geothermal, but overlooked my first two questions. So first of all, well, we don't have to go back to it, but the, the aerial visual shows all that parking along the front. Is there any way to move some of that parking into the back so that we have like a, like right in the center? Like if you're looking down in it, like the main entrance, like it just, it feels like it's going to look like a parking lot from 38th. And I know that we hear from the developers tonight that there's intention to really use a lot of landscaping. But is there any way to migrate some of that parking around to the back? So it's not so parking heavy and a bunch of cars in the front from how most of the community will see it?
I, I think we could look at that. Some challenges that that might present is that the public face and the public entry wants to be on 38th Avenue. And so if the parking's in the back, that creates a little bit more challenges on how do you get into the building? Do you park in the back and then have to walk to the front or you just make the entrance on the back? So that was the main reason why we wanted to, we proposed to keep that. And obviously, as Chris mentioned earlier, there's a lot of mature trees that we would want to save along there and then really create the, the large green space. So from the, the current plan, we would actually be pulling the front of the building back by a significant amount to create that green space in the front.
Yeah, and I wasn't proposing eliminating it, but maybe just some of the parking that centers around that entrance.
Okay.
So that it feels more like that, that space feels more interest, intrancy and less parking.
That makes sense.
Those are real words.
Of course.
Yeah. And then I think, you know, something that got us to this point and has come up again and again, is this a site that at some point in the future, should we need it, would have expansion opportunities?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and I think it, it definitely would. And we could look at expanding up, but we also did want to keep that buffer between the back of this building and the, the residential nearby. But there would be potentials to expand further to the east where that, the larger community area would be.
Yeah, it's ironic. I mean, it just, it's like a funny history that it started little and kept building and expanding and now we're tearing it back. While also talking about expanding it in the future, but that's, that's how these things work. So, okay, thank you for answering those additional questions. Thank you.
Mayor Potem Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, Council Hulteen's question about the parking kind of sparked a question for me. And I don't know if you guys know the answer to this. The parking requirements for the residential part of this property are such, does that include this part of the property? As far as parking?
There are zoning requirements for parking here. And so we are following those and I think we could even pull it back from, from what the, the maximum is to, to be less than that.
But so like if citizens were considered, like some of the neighbors are worried about parking and overflow into the neighborhoods. But if they were going to overflow, they could overflow maybe like on a weekend if somebody was throwing a party or something into the city hall parking lot that's not really being used, not probably into Dudley and.
Correct.
Yeah. Oh, great.
Rebecca, thank you very much for your, for your presentation. Councilors on page five and six, we've, we have recommendations here from, from staff, one through five. And I would like to see, we've had discussion on, or a thought on item number three to sort of, I'm going to use the term slow walk it or, you know, kind of, kind of proceed with caution that the, that I think we would want to make sure that our, our program was pretty good before we started engaging the public. But with that caveat, do we have consensus to move this forward? We do. We do very much so. We will move in that direction. Rebecca, thank you very much for joining us tonight. Great presentation and we're really excited to work with your firm going forward.
Wonderful. Me too. Thank you all.
Thanks, Rebecca.
You're the, you're the AT guy? Want to take a little break?
Yeah.
Okay, let's, yeah, while we tee this up, let's take about, let's come back about 20 minutes after, if we will. That'll give us about almost 10 minutes. if we will, that'll give us about almost 10 minutes. Hey, thank you all. I'd like to reconvene our study session and move to agenda item number three. This is a discussion on property acquisition for Public Works and Public and Park Shops. Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mayor. You heard us talk about the facilities master plan tonight earlier. Another recommendation that came out of that was to co- locate and expand the Public Works and Parks shops to one site. The recommended direction is to acquire a parcel or parcels directly south of the existing Public Works shop space off of 44th Avenue to make this expansion possible. The current Public Workshop is somewhat embedded in the neighborhood at about 44th and Parfett, and the Park Shop is at Anderson Park adjacent to the outdoor pool. Early in the analysis of existing conditions and assessments in our study, it was determined that priority should be given to the Public Works and Parks departments as their facilities have been neglected over the years. Both departments need significant increase in interior and exterior space, which cannot be accommodated at their respective shop locations. Dan reminded me the other day, last week, that these buildings are our oldest nonhistoric owned buildings, right? Is that how you put it? So we have older buildings, but they're in our historic inventory. A building condition assessment was also conducted by the HOBO Group as part of the facility master plan. The assessments considered building systems, mechanical and electrical, architectural, and site conditions, and code compliance. Both the Park Shop and the Public Work Workshop received a rating of poor. Coincidentally, a parcel off 44th Avenue, just south of the Public Workshop, was put on the market. Staff has entered into a letter of intent with the property to purchase the property for 2.1 million. The most recent appraisal valued the property at 2.2 million, and the property was recently under contract for around 3 million, but that contract fell through. So we're here this evening to seek direction from City Council on how to proceed. The city is using Pinnacle Real Estate Advisors who are here this evening, and I'm sure happy to answer any questions. Esther Kettering, and that's it. So, we do have a visual up here on the screen for you that does show the current Public Workshop. So, this, this is 44th right here. This box here in green is the current Public Workshop. This map came out of the Facilities Master Plan. These are different properties that we looked at for potential expansion. This property currently is the one that's for sale, and that's the one that we are speaking about tonight. We were considering several different parcels in here, but this is the one that is available today and that would provide, we believe, probably the needed space for expansion to include all of our shops areas in this one area. So with that, any questions? Esther, did you want to add anything before we go, and is that okay with council?
Okay. Okay, Council Hulteen.
Thank you. So my first question is, so a minute ago, we saw some assessment of what the city's needs are for the Lutheran location. What, what are the needs to co-locate Public Works and Parks and Rec? Like, how, how does this acquisition compare to their space needs?
How, Dan, can, you want to speak to that, or you come to the mic if you, if you could up here?
Please.
Does everybody know Dan Byers, have everybody, Dan Byers, our Facility and Fleet Manager? And so he's been helping us with all these.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
In the Facility Master Plan, those numbers are actually there, but I can, just generally speaking, to the space that's available, it's currently about, it's about three times the size, excuse me, four times the size of the current park space. And the park, according to the feasibility, or excuse me, the master plan, the park space requirement needs are, are about four times. So this actually fits that pretty closely. The, the original master plan, or the, I guess it's the current working master plan, also suggests that we, if we can, purchase the adjacent lot, and that should meet all the outdoor space needs that we, that they determined that we would need now and in the future. Is that?
It, it does. Thank you.
Yep.
But part of why I'm asking is that I look back at the, the 44th Avenue Subarea Plan as well to see how this fits in with that. And, and I didn't really have a sense of what our, our ground space needs are, but the question that came to mind for me is if, if we didn't need all of the site, but what I'm hearing is that we do need all the site, could we, could we subdivide the front of it for the housing that's envisioned per the Subarea Plan? Create a drive, like along one edge of the property? And just in part because what, what that subarea calls for and envisions is residential investment along that corridor. But if what we need is the whole site, then that idea does not necessarily get us where we need it.
The other thing I might add, if you don't mind, Patrick, is that one of the major advantages to this plan is that it gives us access directly to 44th for all our parks and Public Works vehicles, which is really, not only convenient, but it just, it's like a safety factor. Obviously, we're driving big trucks through neighborhoods currently. So, just for me personally, being a member of Public Works, you know, I can see a lot of advantages for, for our city there.
Great, thank you.
Council Hall.
I think that probably kind of answered my question as far as circulation is better, definitely from 44th and going through the neighborhoods. Yeah.
Yeah, you come up here too.
So, so if you, if, if, if the two pieces, the one, the two red ones, if they were the exact same price, and they're pretty close to the same size, what would your preference be?
The, the space that is available would be definitely preferential.
Okay.
There's more flow, the flow from 44th to our existing structures, and where we, you know, already have some newer buildings.
Okay.
Where we already have some newer buildings that we can keep, like our sweeper building and that kind of stuff. That's a sweeper building there. So we're already kind of like framed out on the perimeter, so I just think that the flow from 44th through this property would be much better. This property would bump into our existing Fleet Shops, which, you know, ultimately, this whole space would be reconfigured, but, you know, in terms of like getting it into use quickly, this is a, this is kind of an amazing opportunity in a way, at least to execute the Facility Master Plan, which is, you know, kind of where my focus is. Thank you.
Additional questions? Council Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. The material provided by the owner of the property show it as... Let's back up a little bit. I, the original discussion was on both sides, but we're only looking at the one, the property on the east, right? That's, I believe, 1122144. Right, because if, if you look at, at the material that's included in the package, it does show both sides, and the property on the west has, has tenants, has four houses on it. But that, again, I don't want to throw us too far off tracker, but that, that is not included in what we're looking at tonight.
So, yeah, so all the colored buildings on this, this map?
Right, right, that's what I was looking at.
Yeah, this is all one parcel. It's somewhat subdivided now, but parcel on the east is, has a commercial building, used to be a restaurant, used to be a bar. Today, it's being used for appliance sales or repair. We don't know really. We toured the site. There's probably 5,000 or more appliances in there. Property on the left does have some residential units, as you can see.
So it is including that property on the west as well?
Yes, yes, that's one parcel.
The, well, first off, what, what are all those things that'd show up on Google Maps or on the aerial view? All the little white dots in behind the building, what are those?
Those are refrigerators, washers, dryers, dishwashers.
Are they, are they junk?
Most, I, I don't know 100%. We toured the site. Some of them look fairly new. I don't know exactly what they're using them for. Esther, if you want to come, come to the mic if you could.
I'm, I'm just interested in learning a little bit more about if, if there are materials stored on property that could be possibly leaking chemicals into the ground or something, it's going to increase the cost of having to clean up the site.
Esther could speak to that.
My name is Esther Kettering.
You can pull that down.
I am with Pinnacle Real Estate Advisors, and I'm here with my colleague, Joe Austin. And the first thing I'll say about this property is that it is available for sale. When you go out to buy property from an unsolicited seller, it becomes more difficult. But the, the advantage here is that this is on the market, it's for sale now, there is motivation by the seller, and we have a letter of intent at 2.1 million. So, we tried to cover all the eventualities of the condition of this property because it is, no matter what Public Works does with it, I guarantee you it will be a vast improvement. So, the, there are, I think, about four or five individual residential type tenants that, that's not individual people, but individual tenancies on the west part of the property. In the commercial building, it is an appliance repair and resale, recycling. It's an interesting operation. So, one of the requirements is that the, the seller will be required to make the property free of all tenants, and I will say occupants, because we're not sure if there are formal tenant relationships, landlord-tenant relationships with some of the occupants, and they will make sure that all the personal property on the site will be removed before closing. If it is not, there will be an escrow account retained, a certain amount retained from the seller's proceeds at closing. In the event they don't create satisfactory conditions, that money can be held in escrow for 30 days. If they then comply with satisfactory conditions for delivery of the property to the city, then that money will be released back to the seller. If it is not satisfactory, then the city would be able to pick up and take care of that amount to clean up the property. But this is a very highly motivating factor, and generally speaking, it should take care of the personal property situation. Now, environmental conditions? TerraCon had, TerraCon, who's an environmental engineering firm, has submitted a proposal for a Phase One. Phase One environmental report asks the question, do we believe that there is a concern for any problem? And if the answer is yes, then you move to a Phase Two, which is testing and exploration. If the answer is no, you're good. I suspect, I will not be surprised if there could be a reason for a Phase Two. Because there is a lack of ability and confidence in the seller to undertake this analysis, the city is taking on a contract with TerraCon. Same thing with a land survey. There is a lack of ability for the seller to undertake that effort. There, there has been some surveying done in the past, but the survey and, and the land survey, the boundary survey, boundary and improvement survey, and the environmental Phase One and very possibly Phase Two kind of go hand in hand, and the city will have control of those two processes. So.
So if, if some sort of contamination is discovered during the inspection, whose responsibility would be to clean up?
If, if there is a Phase One, and it's determined that there is no cause for concern, then we move forward to closing. There is a 60-day inspection period from the date of City Council approval later. That, that clock doesn't start ticking until City Council approves a contract. If it goes to a Phase Two, and it's determined that there's a cleanup, I, you could call it a Phase Three, or you could call it a voluntary cleanup program, there's an opportunity to renegotiate the price if there are conditions identified that require cleanup. These processes are things that I'm very confident in managing. I did the first two B CUP's voluntary cleanup plan in the state years ago, and the only way to go about it is to find out what you're dealing with, quantify it, estimate a remediation, and then move forward with that. But the inspection period, the 60-day inspection period is carte blanche for the city. The city can terminate the contract for any reason whatsoever up to the end of the 60-day period. We then have proposed to allow the seller 45 days until closing to take care of vacating the property, getting the tenants off the site, and cleaning up the personal property. It is going to be a little bit of a challenge because there are so many appliances on that site, but TerraCon didn't see any obvious red flags. It's not for sure that there's not going to be a problem. In fact, I, I think that is a good possibility.
And then, just one, one more question. A few years ago, this property was rezoned to mixed-use neighborhood. Can you tell us if that was, if there was anything that happened between now and then to cause whatever potential buyers were interested in the site? What, what happened with that?
I only know what I've been told, so this is allegedly and reportedly. The listing brokers had explained to me that the party that was under contract to purchase the property previously, and you might know more about this than I do, because presumably he went through some public approval process, and he was surprised to learn that he had to loop the water line around this townhome site, which I think... site, which I think was going to be 40 townhome units. I may be off on that. I've seen the site plan. To me, that might have been an amateur oversight, and I don't understand, speaking as a reformed developer, why that would cause someone to be surprised and not able to finish the project. But apparently, he got the rezoning. I don't know if this particular party was going to develop and build the units himself or herself, or if they were just going to sell, resell the land to a builder. So there's kind of a question there. It just seemed to me that it was odd.
Additional questions? I had one, if no one else did. Esther, is, is Terricon able to produce the reports on the, on the times that are indicated in the letter of intent?
Yes. Likewise, the surveyor.
Okay. And we've currently only entered into a letter of intent?
Currently, there is only a signed letter of intent. We have prepared a contract on the standard Colorado Real Estate Commission approved form for purchase and sale of real estate, and this would be the, the actual offer contract. And we put language in there that is very clear about having the city manager sign, but the contract is clearly contingent upon city council approval. And my understanding is the city attorney has reviewed the form. He suggested half a dozen minor changes.
Good.
We reinforced the language on the city council approval so that if there was no approval, even if you missed a meeting, in other words, you didn't need to deny it, but if there was no approval by this certain date, what is it, July 14, then the contract would be null and void.
Okay. And Mr. Goff, in terms of moving the parks and the shops, shops are already there in terms of moving parks over there, do we need structures there? Do we need office space for these, these employees?
We do eventually. I think this would be the very first step, and then we would... Anderson Hollis, who's here this evening, are, their next phase of their contract is to look at this site and to give us suggestions on layout and building needs based on the square footage that's required.
Okay. But the, but the, parks can say where they are now and, and operate while, while this is under design and development.
Yes.
Good. Okay, additional questions from council? Councilor Dozeman?
How likely would it be that URA funds would be able to be utilized for this project?
How likely? I don't believe it's been brought to them yet. The executive director suggested that they have some reserves that could be used, that the city would like a loan. So they, I think you have a meeting coming up, Ms. Hoppie, so to be determined on that.
I, I don't think that it would become a big issue. We don't have a lot of, like, projects in that area currently that would, because it would be a different, we have different funds. And so we don't have a lot of large projects in that area currently that are requesting monies from that fund. But I am not speaking for the whole board.
Right. And, and, I mean, I don't have any further questions, but this, this building has been a huge eyesore along 44th Avenue, and it's just been a revolving door of businesses that have continued to deteriorate the site. And this would be a wonderful opportunity to redevelop it and, and utilize it. And, and I think, hopefully, that we can move forward and, and see about utilizing that entire area. Sad to see some of those residential properties go, but understand that, especially on that busy of a corridor, the use is just completely different, particularly with the growth that we're experiencing. Actually, I did have one other question. So there's a, and this is probably more for staff and maybe just thinking ahead, there's a business west of here that is like a lumber kind of business, and they have a lot of semi-truck traffic, and especially lately, for whatever reason, they have had a lot of backups into traffic. So when I'm traveling west on 44th Avenue, they have people, like, flaggers, coming out into the middle of the street and stopping traffic both directions so that semis can back up into that property, and it's a pretty narrow driveway, so it's, it's, it's pretty difficult in a truck that large. And I know that we've, we've looked at the 44th Avenue Suburban Plane Plan and Tabor and kind of the traffic issues, and, and that's probably coming down the pipeline, but that's, there's going to be a lot of traffic issues with that business that's just west of this property as well.
Yeah, that's a good point. It's like a wood fire, is it? Firewood?
Yeah.
Is that what it is? Yeah.
Councilor Larson?
Yeah, and just one other thing, and I, I completely agree that what we're looking at would be a tremendous addition to 44th in, in so many different ways. The, the question I have, though, is this, the big, big question mark, many question marks around funding, and without knowing more about the renewal authorities, what they're funding now, what the reserves look like into the future, I, I don't know if I can support just, you know, kind of a blank check from Urban Renewal that just says, okay, here's, here's money to do this without any sort of, how that affects that organization going forward. Just, there's just too many question marks.
Thank you. Additional discussion on the site? I'm Councilor Hoppie.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just to address Councilmember Larson's comments, it, it wouldn't necessarily be a blank check, and it most definitely wouldn't be something that the Board of Urban Renewal Authority would say, oh, well, let's put our, let's put our activities in jeopardy for this activity. There have been times that Urban Renewal has worked with the city. There are loans that have happened in different areas in the city that have been paid back. And then there are also times when the city has loaned, people has loaned projects like Sprouts, that Sprouts Development money in, in partnership with Urban Renewal. So I, I hesitate to call it a blank check, that seems like a pretty negative connotation, but there's a lot of partnerships that can happen between the city and Urban Renewal. And when I say different funds, because this is not in a, in an urban renewal area, so then there's not tax increment financing that can happen on this project. So tax increment financing is one of the ways, and urban renewal areas is one of the ways that we can utilize funds through the URA, but then also we have different, like, special funds for different areas, like 38th Avenue, 44th Avenue, and things like that. So it would, it would be something that would work with those two pieces. And also, Urban Renewal Authority also took out a bond on some stuff for the city to do a lot of work up at the TOD site, up on Ward Road. So there's a lot of different partnerships that happen between those two entities.
Additional questions or discussion? Seeing none on page four of your, of your packet, Esther, you can. Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. You've got the recommendations number one, two, and three. We've, we've talked about those. I'll see whether we have a consensus to move forward on recommendations one, two, and three. Looks like we do. Okay. Do you need any further clarifications?
I believe that's it. We will bring this back on July 14 for an actual contract approval, but again, it's, as Esther mentioned, a lot of contingencies based on more due diligence and working with Urban Renewal and a refunding agreement with them at the agree, so a lot, lot to do before there's a big final approvals.
Okay, thank you very much. That will conclude Agenda Item Number Three, which ours are study items. Number four is staff reports. Mr. Goff?
Yeah, just real quickly, so everybody's aware that we, we're going to have some temperature rising here in the metro area in the next couple of weeks, very high levels of temperatures for a few days, so we are preparing for that with Jefferson County and, and the region. Our navigators will be distributing cooling kits, and that include bottles of water, electrolyte packets, cooling towels, ice packs, lip balm, sunscreens, and snacks. Our police department and code enforcement will also be handing out additional water. We'll be providing shower vouchers to our rec center, enable to voucher any individuals who may need hotel space. And also, all the libraries in Jefferson County will be open, and it's, be, will be used as cooling spaces as well. And Jefferson Public Health was also going to be distributing items to help people through extreme heat events. So just want to make sure everybody is aware of that.
Okay. We'll now go to elected officials' reports. I'm going to... Oh, you have another, something else?
I'm sorry, is that okay? Do yourself time. Real quick, Lauren's going to come up and give us an update on the car wash.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Sorry. It's okay.
The car wash. I think some of you were contacted today, or maybe over the weekend, by one of the residents of the new car wash that's near 44th and Gray, so opened months ago. You heard testimony here March and April council meetings from neighbors about the noise. It's taking longer than I think anybody wanted, so I just wanted to give a little update of where we are so far. We've been in touch with the operators on a weekly basis. They were cited into court by code enforcement. They had a first appearance in May, early May. They made a few operational changes throughout May. I think we'd emailed some of you about that, lending their nighttime hours, working with their vacuum manufacturer. The biggest issue, as we understand it, is that when they don't shut the bay doors, the automatic dryers are creating significant nuisance for the neighbors themselves. We have asked numerous times why they're not shutting the bay doors, and it sounds like the vapors interfering with the sensor. They have some operational issues to work through. They, we asked them, ComDev, outside of the court process, asked them to engage a sound consultant, which we could do because they're under a special use permit, which has a little more discretion than a typical business license. They did that. In late May, we met with their sound consultant to understand the scope of that. You may recall from the city and Urban Renewal Authority's work on a sound consultant at the Silver Bullet, it takes a little bit of time to get through the analysis, build the model. So we're optimistic that they're working toward that. Their consultant clearly understood the issues and sort of where some of the complainants were coming from. The first week of June, they appeared in court again, and it was continued to the first week of July to let the sound study proceed. So I, I have been reaching out to them every week, and we'll do that this week to get an update on the sound study. I think Division Chief Kellogg has shared similar updates with neighbors. I can also connect with our city prosecutor and city attorney to try to figure out our game plan to put some deadlines in place or anticipate what that July court appearance might look like. So the, the short story is, it's working slowly through the process. I know neighbors are feeling stressed. I think that business owners feeling picked on trying to facilitate sort of all sides of that. But that's the, that's the most, or the update that I've got for tonight. Unless there are specific questions.
Councilor Hulteen?
Thank you, Lauren, for sitting through the meeting to provide that. I spoke with one of the immediate neighbors to the south today, and it's, I appreciate the work that the city is doing. It's definitely causing a lot of distress, especially as summer is here and people wanting to spend more time outside. And so I appreciate that, that the city is proactively meeting with the business owners and that Kellogg is trying to stay as in touch with the neighbors as possible. I think just the sensitivity is, you know, it does take longer than we expect. And just, I, I think the neighbors just really need a better sense of, like, what, what are those next steps? And, you know, what is the city willing to do, you know, if we don't have a cooperative business owner? I was asked today, like, if this was a neighborhood bar with bands every night, you know, would it be getting the same treatment as the car wash? And it was a good question. So I, I know the city's doing a lot. We have some very, very upset neighbors. So thanks for providing the update. I'll make sure that, that they know to listen to this, and hopefully, we've got good news for them in early July. Thank you.
I have, I have a question. So at what point, at what point could, as the city discussed, I'm just saying, like, the business just needs to stop? Like, they need to shut down until they remediate? Is that, is that an option? Has that been talked about?
Yeah, we have talked about that a little bit. I'd need to talk to our city attorney again. I think that would be a challenge in terms of what's in our code right now. The more likely difficult step that is clearly in the code is that a special use permit that's not following its conditions, or is creating issues would be reconsidered through a public hearing at city council. So that puts it into your court, which makes it difficult. So what we're trying to do is get enough data if we do have to come to a public hearing to set everybody up for a more objective conversation. Noise is difficult because it's, you know, it is more subjective. So our big push with the sound consultant was to get as much data as possible, you know, during that, it's a four-minute cycle. So it's difficult because of, you know, a bar with a band is usually a couple hours, and we're asking them to test it with one bay open and four bays open and doors open and door shuts, or a lot of different scenarios. So, you know, it is possible that we'll end up with a public hearing in this room, but the goal is to get a, sort of, get the operator to comply voluntarily, to mitigate as much as they can voluntarily, and to get some data.
Are there any fines right now being assessed for not complying, or?
Don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
Any other questions for, for Lauren? Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Did you have any, anything else? Okay, we're going to go with Dan, and then...
Question for Patrick. Can you give us an update on the storm drain issue at 38th and Independence?
Not much more than I can send out, than, than I sent out, I think, over, was it this weekend or Friday? Yeah, we had a major, another stormwater failure around Hoyt Court in Independence, 38th. It is, I think, what I, update I did get, we can thankfully spin cast it. Doesn't have to be dug up and replaced, so it'll have less impact on 38th and those neighborhoods. It does, it's a, it's a stretch of the stormwater that is in city right away, but it's approached into property lines of, of two neighbors. And so it's, it's very tricky to fix it, but I think, yeah, that the most recent news I heard, it's, it could be spin cast, which is quicker and cheaper and less impact on it than it brings.
If I understand correctly, you don't have to excavate?
Correct.
You don't have to dig up the ground?
Correct.
And the old pipe that had failed, but you can go... It's a fairly complicated process, it only goes so far, but you can go in there with this material?
Yep.
And it spins?
Yep.
And it puts a coating on the inside?
We can only, it can only go 500 feet, but thankfully, it's about 1,000 feet span, and we have manholes on both, on both ends, so we can go 500 feet from one direction, 500 feet from the next, the other direction.
And, and it will save the city considerable?
Correct.
Repair costs?
Yes.
Councilor Hulteen, do you have something in relation to that?
Yes, I do.
Okay, you, you can go next then.
So can you ask, I don't need an answer, but can you ask staff engineers if there's a pattern between some of these failures and what that percent slope is on the pipe? What I'm wondering is, are we, are we seeing just generally, you know, are they just old? That might be, or is, are these occurring in pipes that have a, a flatter percent? Is that part of the problem? And I see that they're corrugated, and so I understand the, what you're talking about, putting in that material, which would... But I, I'm just curious if we could just ask them, just ask them, like, what is, what is the, are those that have failed? What are those, what is that percent? And, and, you know, what do we typically, what is the minimum percent that we have on slope?
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Hulteen?
I have zero engineering questions. I'll, I'm, I want to talk more about this next Monday at a regular meeting, but I was just really impacted with the news on Saturday of the Minnesota legislators that were shot in their homes. When I was in Minneapolis about six weeks ago, I actually sat at the table with Representative Hortman and actually talked with her, so it just felt incredibly impactful to me, and And we have, our own House Majority Leader lives in our community. And so, you know, this is a time when civic sensibility is personal. And when we as elected officials come in and do the business of the city and interact with our community members, it is okay to disagree. It's okay to have very different opinions. We're better for it. But to, to, to do it in a way that's aggressive or gives a sense of not feeling safe in our communities is really at the detriment of all. So I just want to say, like, that's just been really heavy on my heart. And I don't want to not feel safe in this community because I'm here because I love this community. And the people I interact with day to day are what make it worth being in here every Monday and all the community meetings in between and the emails and the phone calls. So I don't really have a call to action, other than just to share it's been really heavy for me. And I've thought about you guys, and I've thought about, you know, we have our state senator who lives in my district. And, you know, these are our neighbors, and, and they do good hard work under the Capitol. We may not always agree with them, but they're showing up in good faith. And I hope we're able to maintain that here in our sweet little city of Wheat Ridge. So that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Larson, did you have another item?
Are we talking about some of the good things we've been doing?
I hope, I hope so.
Are we still, are we still... Thank you. Friday was, was interesting day. The folks at Excel Energy invited elected officials out to their substation out on Ridge. And they demonstrated first their commitment to wildfire management. But they, they showed how their, their tree trimming process, the sort of legal things that they're required to do, distances from, from a tree that a power line can be, and, and the techniques they use. And it was very educational. And, and joined out there by several of our state legislators from sort of the, the front range who have had, been impacted by wildfires. Again, reminder for all of us here in Wheat Ridge, we are tier one, which is the lowest risk for wildfire. But it's not to say something couldn't happen. And it's not to say that Excel Energy should not be doing their job of trimming trees back from power wires. And then the next day, I, on Saturday, I had a chance to go to Local Works, the block party. It was a lot of fun. And if anybody else wants to add on to that, because I thought it was a very successful event, and my compliments to all of the businesses that showed up for that.
Thank you. Councilor Ong?
I have something to add on to the, the trees because I had some emails. People asking me about, they were very upset about, yes, Excel doing, you know, the trees. And, and what I said I would do is I would advocate for prescriptive. And what I meant was that for new projects, what the city could do, if Excel's not doing it, is that the city could prescribe and say, you can only use this type of tree, you know, but whether it be an ornamental or a larger size tree within a certain distance from that power line. Any good landscape architect will probably go down that path and make sure that their tree is not in the future going to be interfering with, with the, the power lines. But when the tree's been placed under the power line, the, the choice is unfortunate, what it needs to happen. But that's something I would, I would advocate for is being, being prescriptive and just, you know, and maybe working with Excel and saying like, ask them like, what is your criteria? How far do you want the tree to be in your power lines? And, you know, how tall?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor Protem Stites?
Councilor Hoppe, did you have something to add to him?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I would, I would support adding that to a future study session with Councilmember Ong. Thank you.
We'll make sure we get that on there. I just wanted to, again, thank everybody who came out the other night for our district pre-meeting. We, I think we had like 20, 25 people in the room throughout the night. And the city staff did a great job. The rec center folks, as I said, we went almost an hour over our, our, a lot of time and took them all the way up to the rec center closing. But they were, they were fantastic and got the room set up for us fantastically. I also wanted to thank the police department and Sergeant Bowman, who came and gave a presentation about all things policing, including drones and everything else, just like he did here a few weeks ago, did a phenomenal job. And Chris Elliott and his staff at E5X did a phenomenal job. And as I said, stayed almost an extra hour, almost, almost two and a half hours with us, answering questions and making sure. So I really appreciate everybody who came out. And, you know, hopefully, you know, if you have an open mind, you can learn a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Dozeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just a few events coming up, a few that are in the near future. Local Works with Wheat Ridge Creates is having a community paint session for an art installation that will be featured at Ridge Fest. And so the first day to participate is actually tomorrow, Tuesday, June 17th, from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. And then also Saturday, June 21st, from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m. And you can drop in anytime on Saturday, June 21st. But they would like registration to know how many people to accommodate. So you can go to wearelocalworks.org and look at that event for details. And then our first TLC project is coming up. So the city and Local Works partner in having our community TLC cleanup days. And the first one is this Saturday, June 21st, starting at 8:00 a.m. until dumpsters are full. They provide details on their website about what items are allowed and which ones are restricted and how to kind of manage that for a quick drop off. So get there early. It's going to be at the Newland Church on 449 E Newland Street. And then it's a little bit further down the road, but we are coming up on the 56th Annual Wheat Ridge Carnation Festival. I am proud to be serving as the parade chair for the ninth year now. I can't believe that it's been that long. And so parade registration is open. Go check out the website. We just closed the nominations for royalty, so we'll be voting on those and getting that information out as we get closer. But please come and join us for the, for the 56th Annual Carnation Festival and support our service organizations and have a good time.
All right.
Thank you.
Very good. Did you have something further? Okay. Let me scratch you off. Anything, anything else? Okay. Councilor Snell?
I'll be brief.
Okay, good.
Two, two things this weekend, coming up this weekend. It's an exciting weekend in Wheat Ridge. We have two small pride celebrations. Clancy's, all day, has our kind of headquarters for our idea committee tabling and celebration. There's several DJs and bands performing throughout the day. We'll have some storytimes for kids. And then several other businesses along 38th Avenue are participating as well. You can find out more information by going to the idea committee page on our city website. And then on Sunday, we have a community picnic at Panorama Park. Alliteration included at no extra charge. But that is for the whole community. And we're providing hamburgers and hot dogs, and folks can bring a dish. And we've got some games, we've got some music, and it's just a fun time to celebrate. And everyone is invited. We'd love to see you. And those are our two fun pride events in Wheat Ridge. And then just on another subject, I really appreciate Councilor Hulteen in mentioning the recent violence that we're continuing to hear about. But it also struck me, and it took a lot of my, my thought time this weekend. So thank you for saying that. And then on to how hot it is going to be, and it already is. Please consider your pets when you're walking them. I've seen a lot of folks walking their dogs like in the middle of the day and, and know that concrete is getting hot. So just please remember to check before you take your pups on a walk. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. We've got a few things coming up. I'm looking at my calendar. Actually, tomorrow is Happiness Gardens Open House at 11:30. So if you've got an opportunity to get over to Happiness Gardens, try to swing by there. And then I think on Friday, my calendar shows two ribbon cuttings. One at 10 o'clock at Be a Tree Cremation at 3720 Pierce Street, if you could join us there. And right after that, we're going to have a ribbon cutting and welcome Lucky Deals Thrift Shop at 6,700 West 38th Avenue. So that's another couple of things going on on Friday morning. So if you're able to join us, we'd love to have you there. We will be back here a week from tonight at 6:30 for a full meeting. And we have a public hearing, I believe, that evening. A couple of them. So we'll look forward to having everybody come in then. And if there's no more business to come before us, we will stand adjourned. Thank you all very much.